So I think it's like anyone else, if you're gonna look at it and say it's officially acting to the vaccine or something else, you've gotta make that judgment call.
Madam Chair, it looks like we have four out of five. I don't know that Representative Aaron has tuned in yet, but I can see.
I'm sorry, Derek, what about Aaron?
Representative Aaron has not dialed in that I can tell, but that's the only one I'm listening.
Yeah, I know, I saw that Representative Spilsbury had come on. Hi, Terry. Do you want to wait another minute?
Totally up to you. I'm fine either way.
Okay. All right, well, and I guess I'm assuming this is an EFC meeting, is that correct?
That is correct.
So you're waiting for me to call it to order?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so done. The meeting is called to order. And our order of business is an intention to hear from the county manager, Derek Ferland, on the big project for the nursing home in Sullivan County. So Derek, it's all yours.
Hey, thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Excuse me, I did have other instructions. Is there someone would be willing to take a few minutes? I gather we need to have official minutes for this. Well, I will appoint somebody then. Terry, would you mind doing it? Okay, thank you very much.
Madam Chair, could you also take a roll call of who's on, who's at the, on the meeting?
I would be happy to do that, yes.
Thank you.
So, let's start with the members of the delegation. So Representative Merchant?
Here.
Representative Spilsbury? Just say, thank you. Representative Tanner?
Here.
And County Manager?
Here.
Okay, Bennett, Commissioner Nelson?
Here.
He's the only one we have.
Commissioner Osgood's in the room with me.
Oh, okay, Commissioner Osgood? Here, okay.
This is Sharon Callum, can I interrupt just a moment while Stapleton is trying to get on to listen?
Who is?
Representative Stapleton.
Okay, he's in.
I still don't see him on my...
He just popped up.
Oh, okay. This is Representative Singleton or Stapleton? You need to unmute.
Stapleton here.
All right, thank you. Okay, Mary Bork?
Here.
Ted Purdy?
Here.
Sharon Callum?
I am here, and in the Commissioner's office.
Okay, Sarah Rulard?
I'm here.
Okay, Doty Violet?
I'm here.
Superintendent Barry?
Here.
And then we have, do I, we have Newport TV and we have, what, Claremont TV? Did I hit everybody? All right, Derek, now I think we've done what we need to do and it's over to you. Terry, Representative Spilsbury, were you able to get all?
Sorry, was I able to do what?
Get all those names. Are they on your screen that you can see them? Okay, great, thank you very much. Thank you. Okay, Derek, now we're back to you.
Okay, Representative Aaron will be joining us here. I just added her as a panelist as well. Mary, you want to go ahead and share your screen?
Yep.
So I'll do a very brief introduction and then turn it over to Mary to do the majority of the presentation today. So we have quite a lot of information about where we've been really the last five years as a county as we've worked on this renovation project for the nursing home. So we really wanted to start with kind of the basic why are we here question. And really primarily, this is about communication. We have a couple of new members of the Executive Finance Committee, and there's just been a lot of information and in the effort to, in the interest of trying to get you up to speed. That's one of the main reasons for this briefing, as well as hoping to engage and reach more members of the public. The renovation design has not been a secret by any stretch, but it's been hard to just reach the, you know, the average citizen and give them more than just maybe the headline that they see in the newspaper. We did, we have kept the select boards of the municipalities and the city council apprised of the project and its progress. But really, we're hoping that this effort through the fact that we're on Facebook Live right now, and it will be carried by NCTV and CCTV, that more people will, if they're interested to know what's going on with this project, will tune in and ask questions. I think before we embark on a decision of this magnitude, it would be good for everybody to know that a large portion of our population is at least fundamentally aware of what we're aware of, what we're trying to do and why. So communication is the biggest reason why, what we hope to achieve with this presentation today. So speaking specifically about the nursing home and why we've been on this five-year journey, the nursing home facilities are at the end of their useful life. We have major infrastructure systems that are failing really on a daily basis, whether it's the heating system, the plumbing system, the electrical system, and so it's just, it's time. If we're going to stay in the nursing home business as a county, then we have to do something. And to put it in a context, we've referenced this process as really a once-in-a-60-year decision milestone that we've arrived at as a group. We found documentation in our county files that the last time the delegation considered something of this magnitude was in the 1960s, which makes sense because the Sterns Building was constructed in 1970. So this is, this hasn't, it's been a while since we've had this type of discussion about what to do with the nursing home going forward. And I mentioned the failing infrastructure systems. So a lot of folks have said, well, why can't you just repair what's there? And effectively repair it in place? Well, first of all, the way the building is designed is that would be extremely disruptive to residents and also to staff. But the bigger reason is probably that it's not allowed. There are, there's code compliance, whether it's the federal regulations or the building code, and you trigger compliance with these minimum mandatory requirements if you take on a renovation project that's deemed to be as significant as we would need to do to fix these failing infrastructure systems. So the short answer is we just can't do that. We would not be allowed to do that. So really, we're faced with a really, really big renovation project or we get out of the nursing home business, which the delegations are decided and discussed as a part of this process that we really don't want to do that. So, next slide, Mary. So I mentioned this, this is a big decision and it's been since the 1960s since we've really had to discuss it. We've been evaluating options since 2016. There was an initial feasibility study that indicated it would be about $18 million to make the needed repairs. As we worked through the design process, so feasibility study is not a design, the design process that we finished last summer had a net closer to $50 million. So the obvious question, well, what happened? I mean, that's pretty crazy, right? It's almost tripled in price in just five years' time. Doesn't make sense, right? Well, there are three main factors, and we're going to get into this, into the briefing. The biggest one by far has been changes to the federal regulations and building codes. There have been two subsequent iterations to the federal facility guidelines that govern nursing home construction, and those have had significant changes and impacts to our design, but frankly, they just weren't around in 2016 when the feasibility study was... Next was the, is the local construction climate. And that's not only the cost of materials, but available labor, and we don't have a lot of that here, so that's driven the cost up. And lastly, is just the existing site conditions and constraints. So trying to work this renovation scope into our existing facilities has proven to be a challenge if we don't want to disrupt the residents, we don't want to disrupt the staff, and we don't want to hurt our revenues during construction. So all of that combines to result in a longer construction period, which adds costs. And so it's been a difficult balancing act to optimize on all those variables. So I will turn it over to Mary, and she will go into the rest of the presentation.
Thanks, Derek. So in past presentations, we've used this model similar to this that really highlights how our facilities at Sullivan County Healthcare really demonstrate and could be a textbook for how long-term care has transitioned through the last 90 years. And so this slide has a lot of information on it, but it does highlight the specific times when we as Sullivan County made big decisions in our facilities. And so as Derek mentioned, the regulatory environment, best practices for care, and also society's expectations drive those transformations. So Sanders opened in 1931, was built as an almshouse, and later transitioned from a hospital into a nursing home as an expansion to the original farm in order to help a growing number of people in need in the county. So through the years, it did transition to that dedicated nursing home where we saw wards with two to four beds. There were common bathrooms at the end of the corridor, nowhere near the rooms, and there were no common dining or social spaces. So the only space that residents of the nursing home had at that time were in their room. When the Social Security Act came into effect in 1965, the payment model changed as well as the expectations of what nursing homes look like. And so that transitioned into Sterns, which was built in the late 60s and opened in 1970. And so that saw a traditional hospital layout with a semi-private room, one bed near the window and one on the interior. They were adjacent toilet rooms where one toilet was shared or is still shared between four residents, and any showering or bathing needs were taken in a room down the hall near the nurses station. It did add a main dining room, which gave residents a place to come out of their rooms and be able to eat their meals out of their room. So you can see there was a little bit shift into understanding that residents needed space outside their room. In the late 1990s, McConnell opened as there was a better understanding of the special needs of dementia care. And at that time, an addition was put on as a dedicated care unit for that type of care. And so the room layout model changed to a little bit more of a home-like environment where each bed has access directly to a window. There were larger toilet rooms, still no showers, but at least that there was rooms to be able to get assistance in to the bathroom to help residents take care of the needs that they have. And it added much bigger central common areas and dining spaces, again highlighting the needs in additions of things like dedicated activities professionals and other family visiting spaces. And so that brings us to where we look for this next iteration, again driven by the code changes and also too what society's expectations are and best practices. So best practices and the regulations identify that we see better outcomes with residents when they are in more home-like environments. And so that's what the codes tend to drive. And so we're looking at semi-private rooms where each bed has a window to reflect similar layout of McConnell. Shared bathrooms, one for every two residents, also with a shower directly in that bathroom in the room, which allows much more privacy and dignity. And increased dining, family and common spaces. Again, the increased activities, both formal and informal, are a huge part of the success and the happy living that our residents have. So if we take a look at this model to track through the, through the presentation, it really lays out the evolution of our project. So each block represents a particular effort in the process. And as Derek mentioned earlier, working began officially in 2016 with a feasibility study. And at that time, it was already recognized that the county had an outdated facility in terms of its ability to adapt to changing codes and regulations. The age of the building also presented significant maintenance needs that previously had been deferred. And let's talk about the feasibility study. So that was completed by Harriman in 2016. And at that time, there was a suggestion and an acceptance that we should reduce the bed count to 148 beds in order to meet the regulations at that time and add the additional bathrooms and social spaces that we were looking for while minimizing any addition or cost of the project. And what it did was it added a small addition for 36 beds to create an overflow space and also additional square footage to meet that need. It looked at a renovated Sanders in order to provide space for administrative staff as well as operational staff to support maintenance, the kitchen, and central supply. And it's its construction phasing was very invasive, and it did identify some additional deferred maintenance. So the feasibility options provided for some family spaces on each floor and introduced us to the Main Street concept where existing resident services like the hairdresser, resident store, and library were centralized in a destination-type manner. So if we look at Harriman's study a little bit more closely, this is the layout of the first floor of the current complex. And so what the feasibility study did was it made an aesthetic refresh to the McConnell unit, which is here shown in blue. A renovation to the Sterns, building that created updated resident rooms on the upper floors and Main Street services on the ground floor, shown here in orange. The purple represents a 36-bed addition that was proposed at the north end of the building to accommodate the expanded layout of resident rooms. And again, renovating Sanders for administrative and operations space. So, oops, I have lost my existing room here. It looks like that's not showing up on the slide. So very similar to our existing layout, which is the kind of what we all view as the traditional hospital-style room. On the right, it shows the feasibility study or Harriman's design at that time, where again, it followed that model of a bed to the exterior close to the window, shown at the top. Derek, can you see my cursor if I move it around? Yes, okay. So this is the exterior of the building here. So you can see the windows. You have a bed close to the outside and a bed closer on the inside, and that exists in two rooms. And there's a shared corridor of bathrooms in between the two. And so the size of the resident room really drives the design for the whole project. So right away, we see that there's the bathrooms and that they do include the showers, which is an upgrade to what we have currently. But the bathrooms are pretty tight, and it only meets accessibility clearance, which we think of as the five-foot circle when the doors are open. And residents often require assistance, which would be challenging in this design depending on the number of staff and equipment that a resident safety requires. The entrance to the bathroom provides little privacy, as you can see here, with the door right in front of the bed, here and here. And so when we talk about changing regulations in a bit, but we'll see by 2018 when we move forward with the, the design is no longer compliant with current codes at that time, which affects us moving forward. So this was a good place to start, and it brought up a lot of, a lot of good ideas, but it also presented some challenges as we move forward. So in FY '19, in the annual budget, the delegation approved $1 million towards design of the project to move forward. And at that time, we engaged an architect and a construction manager and through thorough qualifications and a pricing solicitation, we engaged with Warren Street Architects and Milestone Engineering Construction, both from Concord. And since Harriman completed their work in 2016, I had mentioned that DHHS Administration, Administrative Rules adopted the 2014 FGI in 2017. So FGI is the Facilities Guideline Institute Guidelines, which make recommendations for the design of residential care facilities. And so FGI Guidelines is a bit of a misnomer because they're not guidelines, they're regulations. And compliance with them for new and renovated facilities is a requirement of licensing by DHHS as well as for participation in the Medicaid and Medicare programs. So for rooms that were already tight to begin with, this code change would begin to challenge the ability of the Harriman concept to move forward. So from there, we went into conceptual design with Warren Street, which began in 2018. And so as you can imagine, each step of the process is a deeper dive into the project. And they began with a deep dive into the work that Harriman had done, as well as started to study how changed codes affected the basis of their design and an in-depth study of existing conditions. When Milestone came on in February of that year, they began to assess what the project would look like in a 2020 construction market and began to identify key phase-in issues and how we would actually accomplish the work. So lastly, what was an important part of having both the Milestone and Warren Street team is they had come off a recent renovation with Rockingham County, and we were able to leverage the lessons that they learned in permitting code compliance phasing and operational impacts of their project. So that was an added benefit to having both Warren Street and Milestone on the team. So what were the results of this effort? So with a deeper study into Sanders, we learned that less than 5% of the wall structure can be changed. So we were really locked into the existing layout how it is. Updating the mechanical, electrical, and plumbing systems would be extremely difficult because of the inability to modify or penetrate through a majority of the walls. The required fireproofing and seismic bracing would be nearly impossible to complete because of structural nature of the building. So we were struggling to run, with an expensive renovation, just to make something work that really no longer fit our needs as we were looking to use it for administrative office and operational space. So as we looked into Sterns more closely, we really started to recognize what the impact of the 10-foot floor-to-floor height was and that it would require greater creativity in any future design of an addition, as well as how to run our future mechanical, plumbing, and electrical systems. We need to approach the infrastructure in an efficient way holistically. And so also too, as we looked at Harriman's, one criticism of the current Sterns Building is it's viewed as one big long hallway, and adding that 36-bed addition onto the end of it just created a longer hallway and really was not in tune with the recommendations and the regulations to work to create more home-like environments. In terms of code compliance, so there had been changes to the FGI Guidelines since the Harriman work, and that really dictated more, more space in the resident room around furniture and in the bathrooms. And versions of code changes would continue to be a challenge for us moving forward through today because by this time, there was already discussion that New Hampshire was going to adopt a new building code and another round of FGI Guidelines later that year. So it became a challenge as the design progressed to work, work between what the current codes were and also trying to anticipate what the new codes would be and how they would affect our project if they indeed passed. So we were kind of caught in the middle of what to do now versus what might be required by the time we went for permitting. So again, we were able to leverage Warren Street Milestone's renovation experience with Rockingham County and that, and to understand the positive impact that an expansion in a short-term physical rehab unit could make, that made us look at the program a little bit differently as a possibility to expand to meet a service that was in demand in our area and also increase a revenue stream to the county. We were able to work through the impact of construction on residents and staff to understand how an invasive vertical phase-in could be catastrophic to our census, the resident quality of life and staff morale. And another impact was challenges we would face administering the permit aspect of the project. So because Unity is a small residential community, its building inspector is not staffed or credentialed to inspect large commercial construction like this one, and it puts us in a legal no man's land as far as regulatory authority and responsibility. And we would face hiring our own qualified individuals at our expense to comply with code enforcement. So in March of 2019, the project team presented our findings to the Board of Commissioners in terms of developing a plan to move forward with a solution that met the co-re requirements, operational goals, right-size the square footage of both the nursing home and the office areas, and addressed the deferred maintenance that we knew of to date. There were several key decisions that were reinforced. So the county, we at that time confirmed 156 beds with the flexibility to increase the mix of private pay and the physical rehabilitation unit. We wanted to minimize the impact on residents during construction, not only for residential, resident life, but also to reduce the opportunity for our census to decline. We said that the design cannot drive additional need for staff, which is a very specific model that could impact our budget year to year. We wanted to replace Sanders rather than renovate, and we wanted to assess our current needs for the right solution. So from there, we continued with a programming effort to confirm the current needs. We reevaluated the program that Harriman had completed and compared it to what today's operation is to ensure the approach would meet our goals and support the residents and staff. We also took a look at how we could leverage the space that we were building in Unity to help solve a problem with the Commissioner's Office in Newport and space issues that we had in the Woodhull Building. We took a look at the expensive solution that we had for a modification to the Ahorn Building to increase accessibility and really determined that the right place for that was, was inside the Sullivan County Healthcare Building. So we looked at adding some square footage for that and help reducing the cost of the Ahorn renovation project. We wanted to replace Sanders with a right-size as well as energy-efficient addition, and we wanted to maintain that 156-bed capacity. So moving forward with those goals for the project, brought us to July of 2019, and the project team and the Board of Commissioners... Brought us to July of two thousand and nineteen and the project team and the Board of Commissioners narrowed down to one concept to move forward with. In August, the delegation approved additional funding to complete the larger design effort on what would become the current design. For renovation in addition to the facility. Also during this time, we saw two changes that would affect the design to move forwards. So New Hampshire adopted. The two thousand and fifteen IBC as well as DHHS adopted the two thousand and eighteen FGI. So not only did we see a change in the regulations specific to nursing homes, we saw a change in the overall building code. So that brought us to here, which was the is the proposed renovation of Sterns, which demolishes Sanders and builds an addition in place of it. And provides an aesthetic refresh to McConnell. So if we look at how this project lays out. This is the first floor to get a sense of. What it looks like is again, this is the existing McConnell footprint for the dementia care unit. And this just gets an aesthetic refresh on it. Orange represents the current Sterns building, which would be remain and be renovated. And the green space represents the new addition, which in total is about eighty-two thousand square feet. So the first floor itself is the addition is mostly administration and social spaces for residents. And it steps back on the upper floors as we provide resident care. If we take a look at. The pink space. Represents administration and operation spaces. Green is the main entrance through the great room to Main Street area again, which is the concept. That consolidated current services into one location. Yellow represents county commissioners and natural resources offices. And purple represents the space to replace the Ahorn meeting space. So the first floor makes significant operational improvements by locating supplies closer to the areas that they're used, as well as relocating laundry back into the building. From the Department of Corrections and it creates a back-of-house space where operational work does not impact resident uses of the hallways and elevators. So if we take a look and now my existing room has has showed up on this slide. We can kind of compare what the existing room looks like to the proposed room going forward in the renovation. And so if you look at. This on the left as our existing room, as I described before, the inboard and outboard bed and a small toilet room. The room on the right is what meets the current FGI guidelines or codes. And so you can see. How much more detailed it goes into where each one of these blue outlines represents a specific code compliance parameter. And so it's. Creating space on either side of the bed for getting the resident in and out to their bed as well as their chair. It creates clearances needed around all sides of the bed. As well as some additional clearances inside the bathroom. So in this, it's still a semi-private room. But each resident has an area within that room where they have access to their own window. And then this full-height wall here creates a division between the two sides, which offers a lot more privacy. In a more home-like environment where they feel like they have their own room. And so right inside the room is access to a full. Bathroom, complete with a shower and plenty of space to be able to have assistance within the bathroom. By LNA's or certain equipment that may be used, so. If we look at the upper floors and like in the feasibility study, the upper floor designs are driven by. The resident room layout and size. And so on the upper floors, the blue represents all the resident rooms, which are mostly semi-private. With a couple of private rooms and a dedicated bariatric room on each floor. If we look at the orange, that represents social and dining spaces on each of the floors. As well as family meeting spaces, which was something that was added to the program. And green represents a support space that's different on each floor includes physical therapy, medical and dental offices, social services and other services that are utilized by residents. So the remaining white represents an interior core of operational and staff areas. As well as utilities and services distributed vertically through the building. So as the design developed. The project team began to understand that the project was going to exceed the conceptual estimate. That had been presented in two thousand and nineteen. And so the conceptual estimate is based on just that. Concepts and dollar amounts driven by similar construction and trying to anticipate how they translate to this scope and predicting how construction climate. Will change moving forward. And so at this point, we had a full set of construction documents and we're ready to understand what this project would cost to actually build. So a GMP or guaranteed maximum price is based on final drawings and specifications. And so rather risk approving the project for not enough money. In the FY twenty-one budget, the delegation approved an effort to put the project on the street for bidding to understand and determine. The GMP. And this effort was completed in July of two thousand and twenty. And so also until this point, discussions have always been just about hard construction costs. And while a project also includes soft costs such as. The consultants needed for construction administration, temporary offices and services, permitting inspections. And furniture furnishings and equipment that are provided by the county. We had not yet talked about those because we needed to come to a solid design to know what we were going to look at moving forward. So last summer, we moved forward with putting the project out on the street to develop a GMP. And at that time, we could understand. How this project in that current construction economy would fare. And so at that time. The GMP came back. We had originally estimated in July of two thousand and nineteen that we would be about thirty-five and a half million dollars and it came back at forty-two point four million dollars. And again, this was the first time we talked about soft costs and contingency, which equated to about just over seven million dollars into the project budget. So last August, we talked about a total project budget that was about forty-nine and a half million dollars. And so. In recent talks with Milestone Construction, after deferring the project last summer. Taking a look at what the construction climate looks like now, we're looking at about a ten percent escalation for a summer start. Which would put the total project budget around fifty-four million dollars. So we have seen an increase in cost due to the rising construction costs as well as the impact. Of continuing COVID. On the economy. So. There's a few things that have happened since that original design. Started in July of two thousand and nineteen that can help contribute to why the project cost was so. Much different when we went to the GMP. And so beyond the construction climate. There were a few things that happened. There were those additional regulations that were adopted. That we really had to understand how those would change the design as we move forward. Also too, as I mentioned, the construction climate, current conditions and constraints. We had a lean quality improvement process that studied what the what the benefit would be to bring the laundry back from the Department of Corrections into the nursing home, which we elected to move into the scope of this project. And we had some significant deterioration noted of the under-slab piping and the kitchen floor. As well as some other non-compliance issues discovered in the kitchen as we move forward with the design. So that also added a significant amount to the project budget. But if we talk about these briefly. Is that. As I mentioned earlier, the team was straddling several codes that were currently into effect. And so as we looked in those further and developed the design. We found that there were some additional clearances needed in new resident rooms, which made the rooms bigger. And you multiply that across all the floors of the building and that that drives the size of the building. And there was also a regulation to have specific bariatric compliance rooms. So those rooms themselves, we needed one on each floor and those are significantly bigger than a standard room. So the building code changes and fire code changes required us to change some of the design. Originally, we were going to have some offices in a good portion of Sterns, but. It changed the classification of the building and it no longer allowed that use in Sterns. We needed to add some fireproofing. And we needed to replace the generator. So between those two, we felt that the FGI guidelines drove just under two million dollars. And the building code changes drove about a million and a half dollars in cost onto the project. So I do want to. Mention here very briefly, we talk a lot of times about changing codes in negative terms. But there was actually some regulations that helped us out quite a bit on this project. And so. SB six thirty-two, which got rolled into the HB twelve forty-five omnibus bill last July. Helped address the issue that we have with having a building inspector in Unity that is really dedicated to residential building and unfamiliar. With large commercial building. And so this bill, what this did was it allowed a town to request that the state fire marshal. Issue and administer the building permit process. By request of the town on any municipality or county-owned project. And so we received support on this effort from Representatives Smith, Cludier, Aaron and Stapleton. And we just wanted to kind of shout out and thank you for them for helping them on this. And so we're estimating that this is going to reduce our permitting costs by about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. As well as many, many headaches with the project team going forward. So thank you very much. This was a very positive code change that helped us. So I mentioned the process improvement projects for the laundry. This was employee-driven. This project started by a laundry worker. Asking the question if we had considered this. And laundry is currently located in the Department of Corrections. And we see a lot of inefficiencies moving laundry back and forth to the nursing home. And there's also been a change in the inmate staffing, the availability of. Inmates to help with the laundry. And so kind of this change in process. Created a lot of inefficiencies that we're currently seeing. So in order to bring laundry back into the building, it. It moves into a space that's currently the boiler room. We anticipated that it costs the budget an additional two hundred and fifty thousand. But our study showed that we can save about a hundred thousand dollars per year and. In our annual operating budget. And if we take a look at that over the lifespan of the project, it's about five to six million dollars. So there's quite a bit of benefit. To moving laundry back into the building. I mentioned before, we determined some kitchen repairs and replacements. The under-slab piping and flooring replacement of the kitchen hoods not in compliance. And this work is so invasive to the kitchen that the state would require us to set up a temporary kitchen rather than trying to phase the work. So that's a quite significant. Expense. And so we estimated that this deferred maintenance adds about seven hundred thousand dollars to the project. And we've talked a little bit about this already is how the existing construction market. Changes things. We felt that market challenges drove the project by about a million dollars. Just the general phase in, once we went from that conceptual plan to a real plan. It changed the construction time period by about six months. And so just the cost of contractors being on site and the cost of construction. Has an effect on the project budget. And then the existing consistent. Existing conditions constraints. Were something that was so intertwined and designed in the base of the building. It's hard to pull out of a bottom-line number for those, but for example. To deal with the ten-foot floor-to-floor structure, there were certain. Concessions that we made and how to run the mechanicals and electrical systems. And we actually need to use a proprietary structural steel system. In order to make everything work. So there was an inherent cost that's really hard to to pull out because we made different decisions along the way to deal with it. So if we take a look at the renovation in addition. Some advantages, it's the overall lower project budget than building new. It's shovel-ready. We could move very quickly on this. We it makes resident rooms and offices available sooner and it reuses the existing buildings of Sterns and McConnell. So it does have a complex phase in. We lose social spaces for residents during construction. It's an aesthetic refresh only for dementia care. There is the possible risk of impact on census, both one that we plan and one that we don't plan for. And it's the overall longer construction period. So when the GMP came back higher than we expected, it really came to a value proposition. What would it take to build new? If we're going to talk about spending this much money, is it worth it to look in to see what it would cost for a brand-new building? Rather than renovating what we had. And so that's where we came in August of last year and we presented the delegation with some. With some options on what our different steps would be. And so at that time. We came and talked about that we would have to make some assumptions for a new facility. And we could anticipate some efficiency in square footage. We wanted to make sure it was. Close to our existing infrastructure. We had an opportunity to exceed the energy code more than what we could with a renovation. But we would also anticipate some additional construction escalation because we would have to redo the design. So advantages to building new would be a no risk to census during the construction. We could have a smaller, more efficient building. The project could be more attractive to some contractors because it's a new construction rather than a renovation. We had an opportunity for some greater improvements in the dementia care unit. And then there was always the possible alternate use of McConnell by the county. And so some of the disadvantages or risks would that we would have to almost start the design process over. There could be extensive civil work, the unknown risks of where to build on the property. The potential loss of value of existing Sterns and McConnell to the county. And just the volatility of what the construction climate looks at looks like over the next couple of years while we do a design. And the potential of rising interest rates to borrow the money. So when we look at what a new building could cost. Based on the pricing information that we have from Milestone, if we were to start in two thousand and twenty-two, we're looking at fifty-five to sixty million dollars. And again, you add that soft cost and and contingency is about thirteen million dollars. And so if you plan for that now with a two thousand and twenty-three start, we're looking at a project that ranges in the seventy-five to eighty million dollar range. So in August, we reviewed these options with the delegation and the delegation asked to evaluate what it would look like to build a new facility outside the Unity site. And so we spent some time to take a look at what that would look like. And so last fall in September, these were some of the active properties that were on the market at that time that would meet our needs. So we got a sense of what type of property was available. The cost of properties and the availability of services at each of the properties. And so when we took a look at what the pros and cons. And so when we took a look at what the pros and cons of building new away from campus, we felt that for advantages, you could have the possibility to improve proximity to available services as well as to families. But some of the disadvantages or risk was again, a new design was needed. We would need to purchase land and we figured it'd be approximately about $500,000 in unknown site costs depending on what the property was. And we took a hard look at what that would do to our operating costs, getting away from Unity with some shared utilities as well as the availability of inmate labor. And we estimated that it would be about $1 million annually in additional expenses in order to operate the nursing home in a site off of the Unity property. Again, we would face the lost value of the existing buildings. And with the amount of time that it takes to come up with a new design, we would also face those same risks of escalation in interest rates going up. So that really brings really two directions that we could move forward in order to address the nursing home. And so it looks at the renovation or addition project as well as the new facility. So you can see just some quick comparisons of the budgets of each. And in order to move forward with each of them for the renovation or addition, there's an immediate permitting effort that's required. There is some transition in DHHS with permitting and they've moved a lot of resources to fight the current COVID pandemic need. And so there is some gap in permitting there that that we would need to move pretty quickly on that before they make some additional changes. And it would take about probably about six months for both the architect and the contractor to have, to be able to rearrange their schedules and personnels to work us back in to their process after giving up our spot last fall. And so if we look at an October 2021 start, it puts the addition complete in June of 2023 Sterns, about nine months after that. And then the McConnell project about nine months after that. If we went with the direction of a new facility, again, the budget would be about 75 to 80 million. We would need a new design and we potentially could start that design in October of 2021. There's a huge backlog in projects, mostly with subconsolants. The electrical mechanical engineers are backed up with projects that they have on their dockets. And then we would look to complete that design in March of 2023 and about an 18 to 24 month building cycle, completing the project in March of 2025. So at this point, I am going to turn it back over to Derek to wrap up some of the thoughts that we have on moving forward and some of the impact of the cost of the projects to the county.
Okay, thanks, Mary. This was a slide that we recycled from a previous presentation and it just was something that we thought would be useful to put everything into perspective. Obviously, we all know nursing homes cost a lot to operate, to maintain, to build. These federal guidelines that have changed, they apply to everybody. And that would be if you're a for-profit entity or a government entity. And unfortunately, they don't really care if you're from a rich county or a poor county. That's just the standard. So anybody that wants to get into the long-term care business is going to have to comply with these regulations. A vast majority of our nursing home residents fall under the Medicaid program. It's about 110 or so is what we budget for out of our, out of our annual budgeted census of in the high 130s. So we have a significant Medicaid population in Sullivan County and those reimbursement rates do not fully capture the operating costs. So it's important for us to have additional capacity in order to capture, whether it's private payers or those that are built in Medicare, to help offset the deficits that come from our Medicaid population. Because this was, this bullet was really driven by one of the questions of, well, why don't you just build a smaller building? And so when we evaluated that, we realized that we actually need to maintain that census to address a diverse cross-section of rate payers to help us balance the books every year. Nursing home businesses or nursing home operations across the state of New Hampshire generally run at a pretty significant operational deficit of one and a half to two and a half million dollars a year. Hillsborough County runs at a surplus at the one extreme and at the other extreme, Coos County, because they have two nursing homes that they operate just due to the vast geography they have to contend with. And they have a very significant deficit every year. We're very close to breaking even, so we're second behind Hillsborough in terms of our financial performance. And that's something that our nursing home staff takes great pride in while they deliver world-class, long-term care. It's just an expensive business to be in, but we decided this is an important aspect for our residents and taxpayers. And so, Mary, next slide. So another question that we had previously was, what's the most recent nursing home project? And how much of a benchmark can we, can we learn from, can we learn from it? And so Cheshire County is the most recent project. It's on the surface, it would seem like it's a pretty similar comp to what we're trying to do. But the timing has really made a humongous difference in the cost and the scope just because of those changes to the federal guidelines that Mary talked about earlier. So their project ended up costing $37 million. You can see the scope, which is a little bit different from us in that they have about 22,000 square feet less of new construction. And new construction is much more expensive than renovation on a per square foot basis. The total number of beds is pretty close to what we have and you can see their dollar per square foot cost. But what's, what were the, the factors that are driving these differences? And it goes back to the three reasons we listed at the beginning of the presentation. The biggest thing's been a change to the federal codes. Because they, they got theirs designed before those last two iterations were adopted, they did not have to follow those the way we did. And as we, as we heard from Mary's presentation, that added quite a bit of square foot to our building. Our local construction climate's a little different and our existing site conditions were different than the building that Cheshire County was renovating. It allowed them to do some different things that they were, they were still able to, to do the side-by-side resident configuration where one bed near the window and one bed's closer to the hallway because they had the room to expand. We can't do that because of the way our long hallway configuration is set up. So it's another example of our existing facility adding a constraint to our design solution. So the bottom line is the Cheshire County project's not a great comp for us in terms of trying to figure out whether or not our project is in line or not. It's just too much has changed. Yeah, go ahead, Mary, next slide. So we also wanted to show some information about the current interest rate climate and what it might mean if we were to pursue a new build versus the project that we did design, if we move forward with it in the near term. Obviously, the future interest rates is firmly in crystal ball territory. I don't know what interest rates are going to be in, in 2023. I doubt any of us does, but I think it's safe to assume that they are probably likely to go up just given the, the fiscal policies that have resulted during the COVID pandemic. At some point, I think inflation is going to kick in. The January 2021 bond sale that was recently concluded featured some of the lowest interest rates that anyone's seen, quite frankly. The various bonds that they issued for 15, 20 and 25 year bonds were all below 2%, which is simply unheard of. We've been, made an assumption that we would be going for a 29 year bond, which is the maximum term that the New Hampshire Municipal Bond Bank will do. So we don't know what that rate would be, but typically the longer your term, the higher your rate. Again, will it be close to two again? And their, their next bond sale is in July. Or will it be something greater than 2%? I don't know. So just for your, for the purposes of discussion, I just presented some different numbers based on different interest rates. These numbers do not include the $680,000 wedge that we have continued to budget for when our Community Corrections Center bond was paid off last year. So if you subtracted $680,000 from these numbers, you would find out what the impact is in real terms to our budget. So the right-hand column is if we assume the $50 million-ish. Again, Mary showed that it could be as much as 54 million. We wouldn't know the exact number until we go out for a new guaranteed maximum price, which I don't think we'd have in time for the July bond sale. So that'll be a discussion point as we move forward, whether or not we want to try to go for a bond before we actually have the GMP, knowing what we know from last year's pricing as well as what we suspect will happen due to escalation this year. So that'll be something that during budget build, we'll continue to discuss between the commissioners and the executive finance committee. The left-hand column obviously is the new build option. The numbers are frankly, they're staggering. And again, you, the likelihood of a higher interest rate in a couple of years from now, I think makes that a very difficult option to, to think about. I did some quick figuring on, because in addition to this number, the next question that I often get asked is what does it mean for the average taxpayer? How much more per year would this mean on their property taxes? That's a really difficult question to answer because I don't know. We don't calculate the county tax rate for the municipalities. They do. The best I can do is give an average county tax rate, which just simply divides the total amount that we generate through property taxes, which has been level at 13.6 million the last couple of years, divided by the equalized valuation number that we get from DRA, which last year was 5.3 billion. And so that equates to a average county tax rate of $2.57 per thousand dollars of assessed value. So if we, if we needed to do the 2% or the 2.5% bond, we would roughly have, just for this project, now this, this doesn't do anything else to the rest of the county budget and any other increases that might be needed. So this is just for the nursing home, the impact of the nursing home project. If we assume that we're in the ballpark of about a million and a half dollars that we would need in addition to the 680,000 that we've continued to appropriate, that would be about an 11% increase in our property taxes that we have to raise. So for the average home, say proverbial average home of $150,000, this would be a $44 a year difference in that theoretical homeowner's county taxes per year. A $200,000 home would see a $161 a year increase to their taxes. So there are a lot of moving parts to that, so that's just an illustrative example. I almost, I hesitate to bring that up because I know down the road somebody say, hey, wait a minute. You said it was going to be $44 a year. So, but I think it gives you some, some idea of what this project's impact will be on the average taxpayer of Sullivan County, again, however you wanted to find average. So that concludes the presentation and we would love to entertain any questions that anybody has.
Derek, I'll just start with just a comment, which is, you know, are you planning on going back to the select boards or whatever? Because last time when you came to ours, you know, there was going to be minimal impact on the tax rate. So I think, I just wondering, are you looking to do some, what can I say, persuasion in the, in the various towns?
Well, absolutely. I mean, I think we, we certainly do whatever we all thinks in the best interests of getting the word out to folks. I mean, there is a time element. So it, it was a challenge. Last time we did that, it took a couple of months to get around to all 15 municipalities. I mean, we certainly make the effort though. We would try to, I mean, I hope part of the reason of doing this and having the meeting recorded is to make it accessible so folks can just, you know, watch this rather than us schedule 15 different meetings. But obviously, you know, we'll, we'll do what we gotta do to, to get folks engaged. But I would, I would like to leverage technology to make that a bit more efficient. But at the end of the day, if we have to go around, sure. I think to your other point too about the minimal impact, that was also based on the, the increased pro share, the proportional share that we get as part of the Medicaid program. And at the time we did the, the roadshow, the pro share dollars, that was, it was a different landscape. Things have changed with that and we're kind of anxiously waiting to see what happens because we should start to get, yeah, projection of what our pro share amount will be this year. That was, that's a whole nother conversation, but that, that's, that story has changed a little bit unfortunately because it's beyond our control. But there's less, there was, there was less money last year in the pro share pot than there was the previous two years.
Well, yeah, that was always kind of a very pleasant surprise when it would come in.
Madam Chair?
I don't know how clear you are with Zoom, but there's a bunch of hands up. So if you want me to call them, I can on your behalf, or if you want to direct traffic, it's up to you. I don't know what we're saying, but I wasn't sure.
Are you seeing hands on, up on, on the screen? Representative Tanner?
Yeah.
I just wanted to mention that with the Zoom, does that make your 15 municipality roadshow a little easier?
Well, it's, it's a great question. We, you know, certainly I would like to try to do it that way. I think it would be a faster and more efficient way to deliver the information. I guess since we did that, I don't know how many of our communities are actually meeting in person. And if we could combine, that'd be great, but I think we'd have a scheduling problem. Like if we hosted the Zoom to have them join as opposed to us joining their Zooms, I guess, I don't know. It's a good question.
Okay, were there other hands? Representative Stapleton and then Representative Merchant.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First of all, I wanted to say that the commissioners and their staff have done a super job of boiling this down and making it a concise and understandable presentation. I can only imagine the amount of hard work and time that went into this and I want to thank you personally for that great presentation and effort. My question is, I didn't catch an estimate number for the off-site building option. So I was curious if you had one, even if a rough one. And that's my question. Thank you.
Derek, do you want me to take that?
Yeah, please do.
Yeah, so in, in general, we are roughly about the same spot for the new building on site plus what we felt that we would have to purchase property for. When we took a look at the kind of existing properties in our mind, we thought that we probably would be something in the range of around $500,000 for property purchase. The one point that can't really be, can't really be estimated at this point is what the site-specific things would be in relation to a property. Is it on city utilities already? What's the, what's the geo-tech look like? And that's really hard to put a number on. So there's this kind of question mark of, of site adaptive, if that's what you want to call it, that really couldn't be identified at this time. But in general, if you want to talk about kind of apples to apples, is that we feel like the building itself would be roughly about the same price as building it on campus. It would just be those additional site, site issues that we can't quantify at this time.
That's 75 to 80 million.
Yes, so plus probably about a half a million dollars for the, for property and then plus whatever any additional site work, site work would be.
And another million and a half roughly for design.
Right. Right.
Representative, you were next.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I also wanted to did what Representative Stapleton said about the report. My hat goes off to you folks, all the work that went into this. It's it's quite extensive and quite elaborate. I want to draw your attention though to something which I didn't think about until I saw the presentation. If we go to slide 41. On slide 41, what I saw was it's 150 bed facility. But in Sullivan County, we have 156 bed facility. What caught my attention when I look at the population in Cheshire County, it's roughly 76,000 and Sullivan County have 43,000. So if I do the math correctly, in Cheshire, they have one bed per 500 residents. We're projecting one bed for 275 residents. So my question is, is 150 bed for Cheshire not sufficient for us up here? Or should we be looking at something even smaller, given the fact that our population is significantly less than Cheshire?
I'm going to weigh in on that.
Yeah, and before you go, I may. The reason for being is that hate like we did before with the jail, we had a tendency to overbuild it. Then we rethought about it and we actually resized it and downsized it based upon what we thought the need was going to be. So that's kind of the essence of my question, Mr. Purdy, is are we building what we need or are we building based upon what we have?
So first of all, thank you for that question. The if you compare Cheshire County with Sullivan County, they also have a lot, they have additional nursing home beds within the county, much more than we do. Currently, Sullivan County represents more than twice the number of of beds that the other two facilities within the county have. So the need in question is whether or not is it based on what we want or based on what we need? It's really based on the need to provide services within the county.
I I would agree with that, Mr. Purdy. But don't we have a lot of people that use go over just slightly over the border to Vermont or nursing home facilities that are in just over the border in Grantham County, Grafton County? And I know we get stuck paying them too if they're Medicaid patients. So we don't get the benefit of having that. Yeah, but we still have to pay for them.
We we don't have. There are some people who who go to certainly to Vermont and areas for their medical care. But rarely do we have people. They may they may go for some assisted living, but there's really not that many people that that actually provide for nursing home level of care outside of the county that are residents of the county.
So we would have that figure because we end up paying for it?
We pay for those people who are outside of the county within New Hampshire. We would not have the figure that we because if if there again, mostly Medicaid patients that we have that that we pay for under human services, we would know we would be able to obtain that number for those residents who we pay for that that are residents of of Sullivan County that may go to, say, Grafton or Merrimack County. But we don't have the number of residents who actually go to Vermont for 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 services. And mostly those would be probably on the in the private pay basis that do.
Okay, who else? Questions?
Yeah, hello.
Representative Aaron.
Yep, thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, and thank you so much to the team that put this presentation together. It was phenomenal, really spelled everything out historically and and really brought us along to where we are today. So I really appreciate all the work put into it. I hope that I can be able to share this with some of my town select boards and other people who are interested. I have three questions, actually. One is, when if we went with the renovation plan, when would the commissioner or the county offices move? And and what kind of savings would we see by not using the Woodhull facility? Are will there be, as the project is phased in, will we be able to realize certain savings into our annual budget? And and has has that kind of been sketched out? Also, along the way, will we have any chance to have any kind of opportunity to apply for grants? Or do actually any countywide fundraising? Those are my questions.
Thanks, Representative Aaron. I can tell you, so just to clarify, the commissioner's office is only four people. So Woodhall would not be emptied out as part of this, so there's no savings. The the space constraints that Mary referred to in her presentation really are driven by the sheriff's office. So if we vacated just the the office space where the four commissioners office staff are currently located, it would give us room for the sheriff's deputies that currently have to share desks. It'd give them some space. So the county attorney, registry of deeds and the sheriff's office would not leave Woodhall. So there'd be no savings. As far as as far as the timeline goes, I don't know exactly when we would move. It would be at some point over the next couple of years during the construction. But I I don't know that. But it since it doesn't lead you any savings, I don't know if that's really as germane at this point. And then your last question about grants. Really, there are no grants for a project like this. There is a possibility in the next COVID relief bill. We've heard that the the initial offer for the state and local government aid could result, and I'm going to caveat that heavily because I don't know if we're going to see a dime of it. But based on the pop, based on the population based formula they proposed, the county would get just over $8 million. We could obviously use that however we want to defray the cost of this project or use it for other needs. That's really the only thing I see on the horizon that we can take advantage of as far as grants go. Now, if we get some fundraising, sure. We absolutely could do some fundraising. I don't know who would do it. I don't know how much it could possibly raise, but yes, it is an option.
We just to add what Derek said, we have also taken a look, there will be the opportunity to have energy rebates based on programs that are currently available if they still are available by the time that we finish. So we have looked into those as as possibility. But as Derek said, is generally grants aren't available for for this type of work right now.
Well, those those energy credits so basically would be for your operating expenses? Um, you'd get them on a yearly basis?
It's a combination of both right now, based on the actual expenditure for fixtures or pumps, things like that. What they do is they come in and and they they actually audit your plans and the actual construction and take a look at the choices that you've made and offer a lump sum payment as well as there are some rebates that work into your annual operating like on a credit to your bill sort of thing. So it is a combination of both.
Yeah, Ted, was that your hand up, Mr. Purdy? No, okay.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Oskar wanted to ask a question.
Actually, I'd I'd just like to put in a little bit of my own opinion on the renovation versus new. And I'm kind of I'm kind of glad that things got put off and the price of new went up. And that might sound unusual for me to say that. But with the code changes, if we start a renovation now with the code changes that drove the price up, we're going to end up with a building that is so close to recent code that it's going to be a lot better building for a lot longer time. It's going to fit into the space and it's it's going to be a better building. And the disadvantages going new in my mind is if we go new, it can't be on the exact spot where we are now. So we're going to end up with two, at least maybe three antiquated buildings that we will address if we renovate. So they're not going to be up to speed for any quick activity that we're going to put into them things. So now, just like Sanders is, we're going to have either two or three dinosaurs sitting on the property up there. If we renovate, we're going to address that all at the same time at again, up to $17 million cheaper. That's that's my feeling.
Oh, one, one of the questions I had because I was not around when you were discussing perhaps moving it to another place. And I assume there was some thought that if it were more centrally located, we might attract both more long term residents as well as more rehab patients. So do we have any idea of in the present population, where these folks come from? What's their town of residence throughout the county?
So, yeah. Really, it's 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 mostly as per the population of the of the county, you know, as as a percentage of population, certainly within the counties, say, Claremont and Newport have the larger population centers. We have the greater number of residents from that area. So it's it's quite indicative of the general population of the county.
Yeah, so a thought of a moving to a facility between the two towns was would have one, one of the things I hear so often from not just from people talking to me, but among each other is that, well, it's so far, you know, it's so far out and that people can't get to it easily and there's no bus service and things like that. So I'm assuming that that was some of the impetus for discussing a more central location. But you guys who were on the on this committee in the last two years have to help me out on that.
Representative Gottlieb, I I would like to mention one thing about going between Newport and Claremont is water and sewer service, I I think would end up being astronomical because there's no municipal water and sewer halfway between Newport and Claremont. That that would be a kind of detrimental fee to put that in, I would think. I'm not an engineer. And one other thing I did when this all started going down is I I sat in the center of Claremont in the Rotary and I drove up here and it's 5.2 miles. I live in Claremont and I have to drive six miles to go to Home Depot. So that that's not a huge issue in my mind as well with leaving it in in unity.
Commissioner Nelson, yes.
Yeah, I mean, wherever you put it, it's going to be closer to somebody and further away from somebody else. I mean, if we put it in Sonopah, it's great for Sonopah residents, but it's further for from Claremont. If we put it in downtown Claremont, probably four people could walk to it. Everybody else has to drive. Whether you spend, I mean, nobody walks to Valley Regional Hospital. Maybe one person a day. And so whether you drive two minutes or three, it's a small matter. And we can put it anywhere in the county if you want to spend, you know, $25 million more on construction costs. If you want to duplicate heating at the university campus, we have a renewable heating source, green heating source, you would have to duplicate that wherever you put it, duplicate dining, duplicate water sewer. So, you know, we can put it anywhere you choose for another 25 million bucks and another million dollars a year operating. It it just really doesn't make a lot of sense. And as far as the price, yeah, it's a lot of money, but in a 10% is a big increase. It's 25 cents per thousand, you know, from 257 a 10% increase. You know, say it's 40 cents a thousand. I think most residents would willingly pay 40 cents a thousand to not share a bathroom with four other people to be able to share, have their own shower, not to have to go down the hall. These are residents between staff and residents, it's 300 constituents that can't be COVID compliant, can't socially distance that need some relief now. We can punt it down the road for another, you know, two or three years, spend another 25 million bucks and do about, you know, it would be a nicer building, but those are the downsides. As far as future needs, the baby boomers are coming, that's not, they're conflicting things. There's a lot of things to keep people in their homes, which will work for a vast number. It doesn't work for everybody. And the rehab part, this will give us a much better rehab facility. And one thing the baby boomers are going to drive is more new hips, more new knees, more new shoulders. So the rehab business is is going to increase. We will certainly be able to keep this building full and active for its foreseeable life. And as far as grants and stuff, Washington's getting ready to make it rain. You know, there will be money to the counties and there will be the next priority after the COVID thing is going to be infrastructure, infrastructure. This is a shovel ready project that will be really able to catch any infrastructure money coming out of Washington. I think a lot of people in this on this chat have some influence with Senator Shaheen. That bill's being written and proposed now. I don't think it would be a big ask to have nursing homes as part of the infrastructure bill. But two years out, I don't see it getting funding. A shovel ready project will be right in line for infrastructure money from Washington.
Representative Merchant.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Commissioner Nelson. In regards to the design, I didn't see in the design hospice service built into it somewhere. And that seems to be another part that's growing back to patients that want to stay home but ultimately get down to the last few months of their life and they have to go somewhere. Normally it's in hospice care. That's one question. The other one is that as an aging population, people want to stay home or take care of their parents and so forth. Is a respite care? I don't see respite care into the plan nor hospice care. Was that not designed into it for particular reason or should it be? Can you help me understand that part of it?
So so first of all, thank you. Hospice care is a benefit under Medicare, as as you're aware. We currently provide that care for those families who who choose to during end of life. Part of this design though has recognized the need for a comfort care or end of life care. We've developed specific rooms on each floor to facilitate that service. The as it relates to respite care, we provide respite care. We really require the same admission process and evaluation assessment that we do for anything. But we currently also have a a mechanism under Choices for Independence that that there's a respite care benefit for that that we allow people to access through through Medicaid.
Thank you for that, Mr. Purdy. Is there any way to find out how much we're doing today as far as those services broken out to hospice care as well as respite care?
Well, currently, there again, we do a lot of end of life care, comfort care. And and we offer for the And and we offer for the residents, if they want to uh have an adjunct for the the hospice benefit through Medicare part A. But many of our residents um and family members don't feel the need to be able to access that benefit. So as of right now, we really have no person who has the the Medicare hospice benefit that is being uh accessed. Nor do we have a a any those who have a respite. Usually that comes, we may have two or three. Um, you know, maybe five to six throughout any particular year. Um, you know, for respite and hospice kind of changes depending on what the population, what the needs are. But we don't have a lot of 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 patients who want to access that because we provide uh most of those services in a very effective way for end-of-life and comfort care. But we did feel it was important to be able to identify rooms on every floor. Right now, we only have one room identified as an end-of-life comfort care room. So in this design, we wanted to be able to expand that and make sure that there is a a particular room on each floor to that the residents and families could access at the end of life.
Thank you.
Um, I I had one one uh question. Uh are we in any danger of uh any any sanctions or are we still getting our hundred percent uh inspection approval?
So really, I think the question relates to um or maybe asked the question, does the question relate to sanctions relating to physical plant?
Yeah, yeah, well, when 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 the they're saying that the systems are failing. Uh I I'm relating it to our our school building in in Sonopah. And, uh, you know, we're on the brink and uh but not there yet. So I guess I'm wondering where where are we? Are we still, are we losing any people also because uh they don't like the facility when they look at it and so they don't come?
Well, kind of two-part question. One, we've been able to maintain under our current, you know, we're grandfiling it certainly for um any of the life safety codes and inspections where we we normally do very well uh for the life safety priority inspections. Um so that is not not a risk at this point, certainly. Uh facilities is able to maintain the facility appropriately. Um so that uh we're not at risk for deficiency relating to uh
That that's my question, yeah.
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 And and
Madam Chair.
Did we get
Representative has his hand uh raised, I just wanted to thank you for being noticed and here. Um, just a general observation, I have a gut feeling that uh when we add up tangibles and say, we're likely to confront a million dollars or more of extra operating costs to relocate to a new site. That what we probably can't measure is a whole bunch of intangibles that drive those tangibles. In other words, redundancy, hassle, complexity, managerial burden. That million dollars is telling us more than it just costs to pay more people.
Any further comments?
Uh, yeah, I do.
Representative Aaron.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So in looking at all of this, I mean, um obviously, there's benefit to going ahead with the original renovation plan. And I'm wondering, how soon would we be able to move on that? And uh is that something that the commissioners would be uh supporting?
Why don't we start, Mary, you answer the timeline and then we can let the commissioners chime in with their two cents.
Yeah, so what the what the timeline would look like is that we would um want to make an immediate push to get the plans um through DHHS licensing. As I mentioned earlier, um they are having some personnel changes and are not going to have um focused people to work on licensing of of new projects. And so we would want to push on that right away to try to get that through their system. And then um at that point, uh we would just really be working with uh milestone engineering and construction to take a look at um what their schedule is. When when we originally spoke um about a month ago, they felt that they could um mobilize early fall and rework the project into their schedule. So that puts us sort of on the same timeline that we were um this time last year where we would be looking to to hit the street um to develop a GMP in uh, you know, the May-June timeframe. Um it got delayed a little bit last year because of COVID and and such, but um when we use the term shovel-ready, like we we are ready to go. And and so there is a lot of lead-up uh processes that can happen up to when they would actually mobilize on site as far as getting ready to move staff and things like that. So literally, um the wheels are could be turning and moving right away with a construction start in early fall.
Um, I'm a hundred percent in favor of the renovation project. Uh financially, and we've already found out in just a few months how fast it costs, the costs go up as we push this thing out. Um and I uh I I weigh everything as far as I can. Mary did a great job of explaining to this to me the first time and the second time tonight. And I will say the second time, you pick up a lot more than you got the first time. But I came into this after the 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 fact it was already designed. And Mary has explained this to me, I've done my homework and I'm a hundred percent in favor of it.
You can wait?
Y- yeah, hi, um, yeah, I mean, if all things being equal, new building would be great. But all things aren't equal, it's twenty-five million dollars more and two million, two years further down the road. Um, this meets the needs, uh it meets the needs at the least cost. It doesn't do assisted living and all that stuff, but we have, you know, assisted living, the campus concept that I've heard, which is a great concept of uh housing assisted living. We have room to do that on site. If we, somebody or developer wanted to do that, we would certainly be open to it to do a campus-type thing. But this meets the needs that we have now, that we will have for the next sixty years um for the least amount of money. And there are those, I know there's, well, if we wait, construction costs are going down. The people that are telling us it's escalating are the builders. Um any builder you talk to is not looking at things going down. Um a- and it's the engineers and and the folks that are telling us that prices are escalating. And they're not saying wait two years. I know they're looking to cash a check too, but you know, it's the people that know what they're doing are betting that things are not going down. And and as far as community outreach, we would love to go to the senior centers and do presentation. Go to slight more meetings and do presentations, but COVID has made that kind of tough to do. Um, we're doing the best we can by getting this out on NCTV, CCTV. But that seems to be for the next foreseeable future, that seems to be community outreach.
And I believe Commissioner Hebert is unmuted.
Yes, Commissioner Hebert, let's hear from him.
Yes, hi. Uh, thank you all for for your questions and and everything that been, you know, I I mean, they're fair and honest questions and I'm glad you asked them. Um and Mary's presentation was very good and Derek, uh you both do a great job. Um, yeah, I'm personally, I am for the uh project the way it stands. Um, I I I just think uh it it's more of a servicer county than actually a moneymaker. Um and and how much, you know, I just don't understand putting more money into it when this uh the work that's been done on this project is is um very substantial and and it's very ready to go. And it's it really puts us in within code for for several years to come. Um, so I I think it's a great project and I and, you know, I'm I'm totally in favor of it.
Thank you. I have I have a question, a follow-up question, Madam Chair.
Yes, please.
So I'm wondering, you know, we were talking about um the possibility of having assisted living in the same uh unity campus. What about the thought of perhaps selling some of our land to a developer to put in an assisted living facility? And being able to use some of the funds from that sale to offset the building costs for this particular project?
And who who are you addressing your question to, Representative?
Uh, could be, could be to uh the county manager or the commissioners.
Thank you.
Joe Osgood talking, my my thought process there would be, I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to sell county land to somebody to do something. I'd be way open to leasing them land on a long-term lease along with uh making sure that the infrastructure that they're going to be building on will handle it. I think we can do water, I'm not sure where the sewer would fall in. But th- those would be a couple of the areas. And and, you know, whatever the lease payment is could offset the cost.
Um, I'm I'm yeah, I I mean, I'm open to the idea, I can't see doing it first and waiting for the money and then starting this project that we can certainly do it at any time. Um, you know, i- if that arises, it's certainly something we can look at and um and use as a revenue stream, but tying it to this project kicks it back another two, three, four, or five years.
Uh Representative Merchant and then Representative Stapleton.
So back to the question, as far as the building, it sounds like the direct cost is related to the number of square feet. So if we end up having an issue about trying to save money on the construction cost, one of the ways to accomplish that would be the number of square feet that we build, which goes back into how many beds do we build into the structure? Um, so what I'm looking at then saying, within the plan we have today, a way to cus- uh to customize the building, to economize on the money we spend, to have less beds to keep us in a financial uh situation where we're not hitting the taxpayers as heavy as we are today or could be by trying to minimize the number of beds that we're building.
Thanks, Representative Merchant. We we did study that throughout the course of this um design um evolution to try to evaluate that exact same question, could we build a smaller building? Um, yeah, we absolutely can. There might be unintended consequences, though, of what that does for our annual revenues from from operations, particularly if we, I I mentioned before that the the resident mix, right now, we have roughly a hundred and ten uh Medicaid residents and in the balance, our combination of private pay and and Medicare. So I guess the qu- the question's twofold. Number one, how much smaller do we build it? And number two would be, who do we turn away? Um presumably, we would not turn away Medicaid uh census residents. And so if we're turning away private pay and Medicare, potentially what we're setting ourselves up for is a is an annual deficit similar to what the other counties run. So, you know, it's a tricky thing because the, not only that, we try to project, as Ted mentioned, the aging baby boomer population. We think there is going to continue to be an increase in demand for long-term care for the next twenty-ish years. Uh and then it's likely to decrease a little bit, but what do we do for the next twenty years? The the hundred and fifty-six beds, so you think about, there there's an absolute maximum, the one fifty-six. But then there's more of a realistic maximum because there's a lot of turnover in the resident population. And so when a resident passes away, we don't have another someone from the waiting list in there the next day. There's a little bit of a lag, so we can't run a hundred and fifty-six residents all the time, um all year long. Um, there's a three to four percent lag just associated with the natural turnover um in the population. So really, the 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 theoretical maximum is closer to one fifty. So if you have a hundred and fifty-six bed license, you can really expect to run at a maximum about one fifty, give or take. Before the co- uh the COVID pandemic hit, we were running in the low one forties, which was which was really good. So we were shrinking that gap between our actual uh daily aver- average daily census and our theoretical maximum of that, you know, whatever that around one fifty number would be. So, you know, and if over the next twenty years, there's going to be a greater need for beds. I I think it's likely that we could theoretically fill those beds. On a related note, though, is the issue of staffing, which is something that every um hospital is contending with. You know, driven by even DHMC has staffing challenges. And so if they can't fill all their nursing physicians, you know, it's it, there's a trickle-down effect to the other hospitals and long-term care facilities. So those are, they're related challenges, but I don't know that the staffing challenge is something that should necessarily shape the decision about how many beds we should provide, given the demographic projections for the next twenty years. Um, it's it's something we've grappled with and what we settled on was a flexible facility that would be able to accommodate a larger share of short-term rehab that you heard Mary mention, and I think Ted mentioned it too, is how we can make up for that surge and then possible decline in the baby boomer population by catering to people that just need to come to the nursing home for short-term rehab stints after a stroke or a surgery um and then go home, because people frankly are staying at home longer um because of the different uh in-care uh options for for these for these folks. So it it's a complicated question and again, firmly in crystal ball territory, we think like this plan makes sense for a number of reasons. But um, yeah, it's 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 been a hard one to figure. Um, I do think, though, that that's, the one fifty-six is probably the right number for us. But certainly subject to, you know, discussion and debate and different ideas on that, but.
If I may, Mr. Madam Chair, I do concern myself with staffing. It's not just the cost of the building and the impact it has on the taxpayer. But fundamentally, staffing, what I've been coming across, particularly with nursing, even with LNA's and LPNs, i- it's it's becoming very dire trying to find appropriate staff. And my concern is that we could build two hundred beds, but if you only can staff a hundred and twenty, then we built eighty beds that we don't have the ability to staff for. So staffing is a real concern, a just concern about building something that we can't staff. And it's not just the cost of it itself, I've mentioned before, but the impact of not even having the staff to staff it.
I I absolutely share your concern. Um, I I I wouldn't say necessarily it's a problem we can't solve. I do think our ability to solve it is limited. But what we can do, I think we have tried, um Ted uh himself and a few of his uh senior nursing staff, we have been working with River Valley Community College um as well as the local tech centers, so Newport and in Claremont. Um and the guidance counselors to really do a better job of of telling the story to our high school-aged population about the abundant career options in healthcare. And it's not just because of Dartmouth, but it certainly doesn't hurt. Um, you don't have to go a million miles away from home to find a very rewarding and 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 good solid, you know, financial career in the in nursing. Um, and so we're doing more to become a part of that conversation. Uh Ted had worked in the River Valley, again, pre-pre pandemic. We had become a clinical site for the LPN students at River Valley. So again, out of every, out of every LPN student that comes through, are they all going to work for Sullivan County Healthcare? Uh, probably not, but a few of them might. Um, and so we're we're just trying to do more to raise the awareness of what we've got going on out there, because we do have some good things going on. I do think the building could help with that recruiting effort. It's a very expensive but very visible manifestation of our commitment to this mission. Um, again, will it solve it all? I don't think I could, you know, nobody can promise that. Uh, we are doing what we We are doing what we can, but once we decide to build a smaller building, then the staffing doesn't matter anymore. Even if we did something to solve the staffing challenges, it wouldn't matter because we're locked into a smaller building. And again, it goes back to the first question, how much smaller would it be? What does that do to our resident mix? And how does that changed resident mix impact our ability to be, at this point, taxpayer neutral from a revenue and expense standpoint? That would be a serious concern because if we started turning a $2 million deficit every year, that would very quickly overcome the one time capital cost of the project. So it's, it's definitely complicated.
Derek, you know, I have to leave at 6 o'clock because I have another meeting I have to get to. But Ted, did we ever go back to the fact that we used to be able to train people in the, the health center? And we, we had lost that, I think, before you came. Does that not, that program not exist anymore or does it still exist?
Yes, pre, pre COVID, we also have a relationship with a a, an entity, a company that, that will train with us, LNA's on, onsite, on house. So that, that's still active and we expect that to, to continue, you know, once things are opened up after COVID.
Right.
As Derek alluded to, we have been working with, recently met with the Newport students there. They have been trained at the technical center and recruited them along with, you know, longstanding relationship with River Valley. So, yeah, we, we, we're always able to meet our needs, certainly. And, and usually, you know, we've been working hard to, to decrease the reliance on agency and.
I said that was going to be my next question. Yeah, yeah. So how, how many people have we gotten from these training programs? Have we gotten any employees from that?
Well, we, we just met, the Newport School Technical Center is just graduating another class. So we just met with them last Thursday. And, you know, but, but throughout the, throughout the years, it just depends, you know, on, you know, we, we might get, usually when a class is held for LNA's at the facility, maybe there may be 10 students, we'll get two to four of those usually from the class. And kind of the same with, right now, we've, we initiated, there was an emergency program for licensed nurses that were able to get a, an emergency license because they're on their senior year of their RN or LPN program. And we were able to accept them and, and, which allows them to complete their training within the facility. We have three onboard that we accepted on that program.
Okay, good. Thank you. That's all I have.
Madam Chair, I just had a procedural question. Do you want to hand over your chairwomanship duties to somebody else? Because we still have some hands raised and I want to make sure that we have a traffic cop appointed to.
Yeah.
Representative Stapleton and Representative Spilsbury both had their hands up.
Yeah, let's see, I've lost Representative Merchant. So Representative Tanner, can I turn it over to you? And I'll hang on for another two and a half minutes.
Yes, I, I will take it over. I need to leave at 6:30 for another meeting as well, so. Falling off here.
Yeah, we were hoping this would be two hours, but so anyway, thank you. It's all yours.
Okay, thank you. So who, who is Representative Stapleton? Would you?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. In past conversations and at meetings, it was brought up that reducing the bed size really counterproductive. And if you reduce bed size, getting beds back is difficult, if not impossible. Reducing bed size also means redesign and more work money for consultants and, and that redesign and plan. So I think those are two reasons why we want to maintain the bed size to where we're at. Boiling it all down, we've talked about a lot of things and have considered a lot of information over the course of these meetings and this presentation. And I think we're finally into the box canyon of limitations. We've got cost, present condition and capability. And I think we're boiled right down to coming to the decision, at least in my opinion, that they're going forward with a renovation is basically the only way to go and the most cost efficient way to, to go forward with this.
Yeah.
Thank you, Representative Stapleton. Representative Spilsbury, would you had a comment or a question?
Yeah, I was going to ask very simply before Representative Merchant jumped off, whether it was our objective to make a decision this evening? And if not, then when? So, but we've already lost members, so I think that's out of the question.
Yes, we don't have a full delegation here. This is, right. So decision can't be made tonight, this evening.
I, I will schedule another EFC meeting because I think they want us to make a recommendation. So I'll schedule that in the next, probably not this week because we have session two days, but in the next week. Is that okay? All right. Okay, and now.
So if we don't have any further questions, could I have a motion to adjourn? Representative Stapleton, you moved to adjourn at this point?
To adjourn.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
A second.
Come on. Who's, who's that?
Spilsbury.
Okay, I'm, I'm sorry. I'm trying to look at all the screen. Thank you. So Representative Spilsbury seconds it. All those in favor, if you'll just raise your hand or say.
Aye.
Any.
Aye.
Okay.
Linda, you're on there.
So I will call the, the meeting adjourned and Representative Gottling will get back to us for a meeting next week of the EFC to, to make a decision. Okay? Thank you all, and it was a great presentation. Thank you, Mary and Derek and everybody else that was involved in that. It was very informative and, and a lot of work, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night now.
Thanks, Barry. Thanks, Ted.
Yep.